In our workshop and.
I'm socializing.
I know you are, and I'm going to ask Mr. Jameson to come up first. He needs to explain a couple of things to us.
All right, well, good evening. There we go. If everyone is ready, just with what was just determined or voted upon in the formal board meeting. Think there's something that just needs to be. I won't necessarily say addressed, but it is, it does need to be considered by the board. So with what was just determined and the definition of a transgender student being established. We are now in a position that speaks to potentially what Ms. Anderson was asking in the workshop prior to the meeting. For staff in our buildings. We have two, two things we need to think through. What is going to determine that the school is in the know? And now needs to inform a parent? Of what was said by their child, let me give an example. If a child comes to a teacher and we'll say it's beyond teacher, whether administrator or counselor. Student says, I know that it says Danny in the record, really want to go by Samantha. In that moment, is that conversation in and of itself? Now requiring school staff? To inform the parent that the conversation occurred? So student comes to an administrator, student comes to counselor. Student says, I want to be called Samantha, I know my record says Danny, I want you to call, or Daniel, I want you to call me Samantha. Is the request? By that student in that moment? Enough, or from this board's point of, you know, from your perspective? If that conversation in and of itself is now requiring school staff? To then reach out to the parent or guardian or family? That's one question to definitely consider. Because if that is the case, and I kind of want to pause there before I even give any contingencies. So given what was just determined, I wanted to share that scenario with you.
Okay, so the first person that raised their hand was Ms. Owens, then Ms. Franklin, and then Ms. Morton.
Thank you.
And then Mr. Callen.
Perfect. I would hope that the name request, the name conversation is not a point of contacting somebody. Because now we are putting on the staff members to determine genders to names. And names can be gender neutral. Maybe you guys feel differently about the pronoun piece, which obviously I, I think high school kids can choose their pronoun. But names, I don't think it's appropriate to have staff members determine, nope, I don't think that name is feminine enough to go with you. No, I don't feel like that name is masculine enough, time to call mom or dad. The staff member could advise them, whatever the protocol is that we now need a parent sign off to use their nickname. Which also I think is wild, but I don't know that we need a phone call home because somebody wants to, to be using another name. So that's my thought.
Okay, Ms. Franklin.
I actually agree with that, I've got two friends who have daughters that are named Charlie. One is Charlotte and they call her Charlie, and the other one is just Charlie. So I personally feel like what we have in place right now, which was a wonderful? Piece of information that you provided at several meetings ago, I think that right now we ask them, are you sure? That this is what you want to do? If so, we will, that's how you described it, right, the conversation? I say right now, we, I think that's appropriate, I think it complies with, you know, the policy based on what the conversations I've had with legal. And so I, I feel like we keep what we've been doing, give them the option and, and that's just my personal opinion.
So just to clarify on that situation, and that's, I understand where you're coming from. I'm sorry if that's too loud. The concern to make, and this is where I started going down the contingency route, and I'm not trying to make things more confusing. I'm just trying to be very direct with you as to how things tend to function in a school. If when I share with Daniel in that example, that Daniel tells me, Daniel wants to go by Samantha. I then share with Daniel, that means in order for me to do so as school staff and for all of your teachers to do so. I need to contact your parent, because the only way? That I'll be able to call you by a name different from the one, from the sex assigned to you at birth, is if I have something in writing. That's what was just determined.
And you, and that's what we're doing now?
Correct, now, but here's the difference.
Okay.
If Daniel then looks at me and says, never mind, I changed my mind about that. Now here's the question. Did I as a school staff just become aware of? Daniel wanting to be called Samantha, this is where liability starts to come in? Or? We can let that conversation end right there and no further conversation or contact with the family needs to occur? That's the level of clarification we need as school staff. So I'll say that again. Daniel comes to me, wants to be called Samantha, I then say to Daniel, in order for me to do that consistently moving forward, I need something in writing from your family. Daniel looks at me and says, then no, I disregard that request. As school staff, what are we to do in that moment?
Um, so I, how many high school students do we have?
We have twenty, twenty-two thousand.
Twenty-two thousand, so let's say twenty-five percent are allies and they're going to weaponize this policy. Right, and so you're going to have five thousand phone calls. Your counselors are going to need to make. Every week, because they could change their mind every day, I changed my mind, don't call my parents, next day, yeah, call my parents. Right, and so I want to change it to a different name, so call my parents again. Um, I think we've got to be really careful on what that matrix looks like, because? We're going to overwhelm our teachers or our counselors, whoever's making that phone call. And the students could change their mind every day, every other week, change the name they want to use. So I think we've got to put up some? Some guardrails there, so it doesn't take away from the other duties, very important duties our counselors need to do, our teachers need to do. So I would caution us about that aspect. And how this could play out? Going forward.
So with that, thank you, Ms. Martin. We have had discussions as the conversations have been ongoing with the board, to have a form that can be sent home. It can be digital, if we're able to create that fast enough, so that we don't have to have paper trails or emails or letters, whatever that may be. But to the point, another layer or another lens through which to see this issue is from the student. And I think that we're all saying that, but I just want to be clear on the fact that if a student? Knows if I go to Ms. Anderson and we start to have that conversation, the student needs to know the rules of the game that we're now playing. So we have to be really clear to your point as to what is the threshold? For the school to have to reach out? Whether I'm just sending a form, or I'm sending an email, or making a phone call? What is the threshold for making that decision? Because if it's going to be that the mere conversation? Is now the press, is the button? For me to make that phone call or correspondence to the house, then we need to have a very large? And vast and very pointed media campaign to our students? Because we have just changed what informed consent now looks like. Because previously harmed self, harmed others, or you're aware of harm that's going to occur. I'm going to reach out to your parent. If it's now, if you bring up anything related to a change in name that seems to be different to your point about? Changing sex by changing that name, or pronoun request? Then that's a different informed consent statement I'm giving to that student. I hope that makes sense. But I just, that's the level of either direction? Or be prepared for language that we will develop to bring back to you. And then we have to again determine what is the threshold?
Mr. Callen.
Yeah, in light of your scenario? It makes you realize just how ticklish, lack of a better word probably, but ticklish the issue can be. But the crux of the matter? Is the parent's right to know? From my point of view, and? This is a room full of people who have their own point of view, and so we may all have eleven different perspectives on this issue. But I think your point is valid in the sense that the rules of the road have to be known by everybody that once you play that card? Here's what it will lead to.
Right.
Because from my point of view? A parent and their concern about their children? Is preeminent. That's just me. Thank you.
Understood, thank you.
Ms. Anderson.
I have a real problem with a student? Who has already started dressing that way, acting that way, thinks that way? And they don't want their parent to know yet, here's my problem. The problem at that point is with the parent, in my opinion. Because if it has already gone to the point where they're dressing that way, acting that way, thinking that way? There's something wrong with the relationship with the parent and that student. That's why I'm against this whole policy. And it may only be two or three students, but there's a reason why certain parents would? Have a fit, throw their kid out, I don't want to put them in that situation, and that's why I'm this way. It's not because I want to keep things from parents, but the, we all know, there are parents out there who are, who need to be schooled? More on how to be a parent, we know that. I have seen it, I have witnessed it, and it breaks my heart? That we have students who live in homes where a parent is going to be so? Disrespectful to them, will put them in harms way? It happens. And so that's why I stood on my principle a while ago and voted against that. It's not that I'm telling all parents, I'm trying to keep a secret. Most parents are, are good parents and, and they want, they want to do what's right with their kids. But that problem right there, what you just described about a kid who came to you and said? They want to be called Samantha and their real name is Daniel or whatever? And then you say, okay, now in that, in this, this regard, because you've, what just told me, you've played this card? Now I have to call your parent, and then the kid turns to you and says, never mind, let's pretend like this didn't happen. It really, that's, this is what puts counselors and teachers? In a position that they shouldn't be put in. And I, I look at the parent who should know at this point, when it gets this far? I blame the parent when it gets that far that they, they don't, they don't know, they don't know. And you go, it goes to that parent in Appomattox who said that they blame, they're blaming the school and they're, they're suing the school board. I'm sorry, that kid didn't run away just because, for no reason. If they had a good stable home, they wouldn't be running away to begin with. I'm sorry, I, I, I feel like? I'm not in a, in a position where I can protect every kid in the world. If I could, I would. But? I, I, I just, I hate it that now we've gotten in a position where we've? Teachers are going to have to make the decision whether they're going to, they're going to break the rules for us, or they're going to try to protect the kid. And that's terrible that we put teachers in that position.
Ms. Melnick.
So I don't think that this is a case of? Like an analogy? Of someone robbing a bank and running away with the money? And then getting caught and saying, okay, okay, I'm sorry, I did it, here, here, here's the money back. I don't think that's what this is, I think this is? You know, our students talk about, you know, feeling comfortable in school and feeling comfortable with certain adults and? And perhaps this may have just been like a little, a little test. Like maybe it's not a student that dresses? Differently or does things differently, but maybe this, the student has always felt a certain way and they? They go to you, Mr. Jameson, because they love you and they feel comfortable with you and they just say, you know what? I'd really like to be called Samantha. And then you say what you're supposed to say? Not a problem, but we're going to have to tell your parent, and then the kid said, okay, never mind. It doesn't mean that there's necessarily something definitive with that child. And? It could just be, it could be a hundred things. And then all of a sudden, and I've mentioned this before? We're calling a parent and it could mean something different, it just might not, I mean? I, I, I? I think there can be a line, like, okay, we've crossed and? But I don't think that that, that that is it, if a child says, okay, never mind? That actually kind of tells me something there too, as Ms. Anderson stated, and I'll tell you. I spent many, many years in a first grade classroom? And while it may not have been on the transgender, although I do have a story there with the first grader? But? There are lots of times during the day that you want to say to a kid? You know what, if this happens, if this happens, I'm going to call your parent, you know, or whatever, we say it a hundred times during the day and most of the times? We never ever call a parent for something because we're able to take care of it in our classroom. But if it rises to a level, then of course? But that scenario actually made me really sad.
So and that's, I appreciate those comments and I don't, it's late at night, so I'm just speaking openly and honestly with you. In support of Dr. Robertson, that's where it has to be consistency from the board? As to what that line is? Because if we're going to determine it, and we can provide draft language as to what that line is, then it has to be supported, or the flip. It's developed in PRC as part of the bylaw one thirty-three that you want to provide language for a regulation that we will follow. That is recommend, that is okay too, but from a compliance standpoint, that's where staff have the most heartburn.
Yeah.
So I, I.
I mean, if you see a student who gets off the bus, this happened in my first grade classroom? Who comes to school dressed one way? And then changes their appearance? As soon as they get to school? This happened in my classroom? With my tape, with my staplers, with shoelaces? With all kinds of things, it happened. And that's when conversation needs to happen. Hey mom, I'm seeing some things in my classroom that I think we need to talk about. This was? You know, I said to that, to that student? I liked the way your mom sent you to school this morning, you looked so nice. And the answer was always, mm-mm, I don't like the way I looked, I like the way I look now. And we had those conversations, mom and I. And? That was something that I felt warranted further discussion. A one time, oop, no.
Understood.
I, that, that's my opinion.
Okay, Ms. Williams?
Yes, Mr. Jameson, I would kind of like your professional opinion, if, if you don't want to give it now? You know, you come up with the language, I mean, you're the expert in this, this is your wheelhouse. So between legal and you, I would like to get y'all's input either tonight or something that we can read? And then either say, yeah, that's exactly what we're thinking, thumbs up? Give it to Dr. Robertson? Because you're going to get eleven different scenarios up here, and we'll be going till three o'clock just talking on this one thing. So you're the, you're the expert, so I'd like to either hear from you or see it in the next, you know, couple of weeks? Written down what your thoughts of where is that line and how you think it would be best? For our students and our staff to implement this.
I think you already have that line. Am I not right?
No, you, you are correct, but I'll be honest with you, if with all of the summits and what I'm about to do with the support of the president, it still gathered me, what's on?
No, it says podium, there it is, okay, it said podium speaker. But to answer your question, yes, have an idea, we've already discussed them, we've had preliminary thoughts. But I think any good decision is made with more people involved in that decision-making process? And from school leaders, school counselors and other school psychologists included? I think we can take what we then draft, receive feedback, and then provide you with information as to what that could look like.
Okay, and I'll point out to you on page five of your chart under number seven? The standard you're going to be working on is no policy, guidance, training, or other written material issued by the school division may encourage and instruct teachers to conceal material information. So that's what they're coming to. What constitutes conceal material information about a student? From the student's parent, including information related to gender, that's what the model policy says they have to do. So that's what they're going to be going against, they have to define what material and related to gender is. So you, you need to be very careful about reading in things, you know, if we're being compliant with the policy, we're going to be looking very carefully at the wording of the policy and that's what we're being asked to do. Sometimes what I'm hearing is people are? Their stories and things and we're not, we're not postulating out everything possibly going to happen, we're saying? Do we have a policy or something that deals with that, so that what they're going to be looking for is? When is it a material information? And, and it's related to gender, and that's the standard they're going to have to figure out and define, so? You've got to be careful because people are going to get upset. Do people sue us, you know, as well as I do, they sue us, there's always something happened to somebody's kid that we should have known about, so they're going to do the best they can, but they have to be realistic as you point out. So you're going to have to let them figure out what's realistic about this, not everything is going to result in a phone call home. Dr. Robertson?
So just a couple of points, one? I know we, we are fortunate to have Mr. Jameson in this position, but I want to make it clear. Mr. Jameson is a spokesperson at this point. So he has been engaging in the conversation at the front line, he is the one person that's been in every conversation. But I can tell you? We have had conversations just like you guys are having right now? Where we took a lot of time to come to some type of agreement? On what we thought the best course of action was, and in some of those occasions, we didn't all agree. So I share Ms. Martin's concern, and I saw Ms. Owen shaking her head. No matter what we do? I need you guys to know? We're going to get accused of doing and not doing. At there, in this language I have up here under F two? The model policies under F two read, students are not required to dress in a gender neutral manner. However, any dress or grooming code shall provide the same set of rules and standards regardless of gender as required by the code of Virginia. So whereas the model policies say if there's a, there's, you may need to contact the parent if Daniel says, I want to be called Samantha? Just over a name? But Daniel can come in every day, dressed like Samantha? And there's nothing in the model policies indicate you need to call a parent here? Because the fact of the matter is? It's within the gender neutral manner dress code. That is, that is a nuance within the model policies. And like Ms. Melnick, I had a student at Salem? Who would change every day in the parking lot and come in? At, on a different gender? And I am quite certain their parents never knew, because when they left, they went and changed their clothes again, but they didn't change their name. So I want this board to know, whatever you guys end up doing, please do not expect any turnaround within a week, it is not going to happen. It is not going to happen, I mean, I know everybody wants to say, well, we passed and we delegated superintendent to come? Even though we've done all this work, we're going to need some time? To make sure we fleshed everything out, and so what we're trying to do right now is get some guidance on some of those nuances? Like when do we report? And like, okay, recognizing there's, there's a little, to me, I got a little heartburn? With? You know? Clearly you could make an assumption the way a person dresses that they're having a gender identity issue? But in here, it doesn't require you to do anything. But if they say, you got to call me a he or a they or she? A they, a he or she, or a, a name that doesn't correspond with their, their sex? There's a flag, so we need a little bit more time, we need some guidance, so? I do like the idea of utilizing the PRC for further discussion, I do like the idea? Of coming back on the twenty-sixth with some more fleshed out language? I also like the idea of? On the twenty-sixth, after we have a little more time to flush out some language, to put this thing on action? To say? You guys have, you guys have had a chance to give feedback, we've had a chance to share some information? To get a vote on this thing, and then we can turn a plan around? Pretty quickly at that point, because we were fleshed out all the pieces we haven't fleshed out yet. And so we've still haven't gone through all the language here, and I don't know if there's agreement on some of our recommendations on how to handle? Section? G.
G, I was going to say, G is the next big section, and that's, to Ms. Riggs, that was the other point I was going to bring up. As stated, if you look on the left-hand side of the document on the screen? What I think can be is we have had conversations and I think the board needs, perhaps, I don't want to speak for the board, may need further clarification? Are phrases such as the beginning of G two? Where state or federal law requires? There are multiple examples between G one and through G four, where it states that? And so the specific federal laws and state laws that are then requiring? School division staff to allow a student to use facilities aligned with their gender identity? Those supporting documents or references will, I, I believe, may need to be provided to the board. So there was a question tonight during the board meeting? That there may be some who do not believe that gender identity should dictate the facilities that it will be used by a student? And that it really will be sex specific? So then what clarification needs to be provided when you look at G two? Where it says where state or federal law requires schools to permit transgender students to share otherwise segregated, segregated facilities? I think that legal reference would help a lot? With providing clarification, so the board feels supported, superintendent feels supported, our staff feels supported, and allowing students to do so.
And in passing five thirty-one tonight, we've defined transgender students.
Exactly.
So now we have a definition of transgender students, which could be gender identity, but not transgender students as defined in Grimm? But it allows in here for some accommodations to not only students, but any other student who might be exposed to that student in a locker room setting. And I also think we need to recognize? That heretofore today, we're talking about a? Handful of cases in our division over the last couple of years. I do worry about student reactions to our change? But we can, we can address those on a school basis, but I do believe the schools are going to get additional pressures by students who are like? We don't agree? And we're going to? Yeah.
Please.
Question is? Is there an opt-out for parents? Who really would just rather their child have? A relationship with their counselor?
An opt-out, I don't mean to cut you off, but opt-out of which piece?
Opt-out of notification.
I don't mean to start to smile, that was a discussion Dr. Robertson and I had, so that, that is? Something to be discussed and to see what's permissible under other laws pertaining to parent rights.
What we've had in the past is parents divorced.
Yeah.
And? One parent has a particular opinion about child rearing, and another parent has a particular opinion, and? We, we always go on the, the parent who has custodial rights, but sometimes those parent, both those parents have custodial rights, and so? Unfortunately, much like many of the things that come down from, from legislation? It, 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 it has a tremendous impact on school personnel. And so I need everybody to understand that, we're going to do the very best we can around the implementation of the decisions that are made here? But it will not be clean? Because people have strong opinions over it. What I need this board to know is we're committed, based upon the decisions of this board, to do the very best we can implement it? But with five thousand two hundred teachers and five hundred administrators and sixty-five thousand students?
So I think, and I wish it weren't eleven thirty-seven so we could say this, is that? While it appears that the implementation of the governor's model policies should be cut and dry? This is the clearest indication that this is not cut and dry? And that everything needs to be discussed and talked about, I think we're doing a pretty good job and we're moving along? But there are real legal implications and beyond implications, actually. And so every time we turn a page, there, there's so much more.
The balancing act. So, and, and I don't mean to, to overs, overspeak, I guess. There is the, a strong desire to include families. One, everyone understands that. The balancing act, and I think I've had this conversation with several of you, is then supporting students. Like, in that moment, in the classroom, Ms. Anderson and I have discussed, how are we doing that? And how are we maintaining that relationship? How are we allowing that student to know that I'm still a trusted adult for you, even though this is now in place? So I do think that there are options for us to discuss and language to bring back and to reiterate a very important point Dr. Robertson made. It will not be in a day, and it will not be in a week. Uh, there'll, there'll be need, we will need some time to bring that back to you, for it to be thought through thorough and comprehensive.
And when you visit a high school, when you visit a high school and you walk through a high school and you talk to a high school principal, um, and I can think of, of a high school I visited where the principal's sitting right across from me, and there was some very deliberate motion, movement to certain areas of that school where we talked about no clicks, and we talked about this, and we talked about that, and that student that you just passed in the hallway, and that student that you just passed in the hallway, and you know what, here? Everybody loves each other. And so those are the things that have always resonated and sat on the shelf in my head, um, especially with those, with those high schoolers. So, and I will yield now to the other three. Sorry about that.
Ms. Owens.
I was gonna ask also about that term opt-out, um, if that's a, a possibility and maybe what that would even look like. I know earlier that, you know, it'll come home as a packet that comes home to his, there's no packet that comes home to his anymore.
But it's, it's online, yeah, but.
If it'd be a little checkbox next to where I put her name in, please don't call me every week. She wants to be her own name this week, and she wants to be la-la. Don't care. She can be whoever she wants, and I don't need a phone call for that. Call me when she's calling in class. So something that shows that those parents have opted out. Of course, given season, a lot of high school kids come back to the parent. You wait until the box is filled.
Opt-out form, and how that works. That, that's my, my thing. Ms. Martin.
So I wanna figure out the order of operations because in the Attorney General's advisory opinion, and then during Governor Youngkin's rally at Bo Creek, they both did mention the child abuse and neglect piece, right? So what's the order of operations? Because it can't be a student, hey, I wanna go by Samantha, and then we automatically call the parent, right? We have to administer this imminent risk of suicide screening tool. Is that correct?
No, we, oh, oh, I'm sorry. Let's slow down.
So how, how does this work?
That, that's a, it would depend on how the student then responds to certain questions. So for example, are your parents aware of this request? Or going back to my Daniel and Samantha. Are your parents aware of this request? No. Okay, well, in order for me to move forward, what I shared before, I would need their written, no, I, I withdraw that request. Tell me a little bit more about that. Why, what, what's, what's going on with you not wanting your parents to know about that request? Well, we've never had that discussion. Now I'm not going suicide risk assessment route. They immediately just told me that there's perhaps not an abuse or neglect situation going on, and we will continue that conversation down that path.
But that goes to you. That's not between the student and the teacher.
This is with counselor.
That's the counselor. That's the special person in the school, the counselor, y'all.
Right, so we need like a, a fl- a flow chart, order of operations, right?
We have that. I'm letting you know, we already have that.
Okay.
We have discussed with school leadership, the fact that the conversation would happen in the classroom. I brought it up at PRC the first day that we had this discussion, that we're gonna keep going business as usual that exact day and in that exact moment. We have a form that we prepared via Google that that teacher later that day can then just submit. Daniel wants to go by Samantha. They sent it to me verbally, click submit. That now goes to the designated, much like it says in here, administrator or counselor. They now have a running list on the spreadsheet because four different teachers could have had that same conversation. I now have that in one place, and I know that within the next twenty-four to thirty-six hours, I'm gonna have that conversation with that student. And in that conversation, as an administrator or counselor, we're gonna go through what I just shared with you.
So the parent may not be an immediate phone call. Parent may not even be the first phone call, depending on what, how that conversation goes.
Correct.
Okay, all right. So just trying to understand the order of operations, that's how I think, if-then statements. Um, that's something I would like to see written out, right? Yeah.
And after, and we were waiting for tonight in order to then present those steps to you.
So what's gonna happen, happen after tonight is you guys are going back to the drawing board to do your magic with the words, the right actions, the right flow charts, all of that, and you're gonna come back to us. And do we want to do it in a workshop like this?
Yeah.
Continue a workshop on the twenty-sixth.
Now, how about the twenty-sixth, you also have a license verification hearing. Teacher license verification hearing, so you can't follow everything else.
What time is that?
That's like two. We've already set that time with them. So that's, we gave you two hours to do that, so that means you're not doing anything before because you've got, you have to, you run a timeline. We have a thirty-day timeline, so we don't, we can't get out of that one.
Okay. Thirty-day time period, yes, do it. Okay, so, um, I'm trying to bring up my agenda that Regina sent us today.
Yes, so Ms. Riggs, we, we could move the, uh, current planned workshop on the twenty-sixth, one B, summer work and school opening update, which is school division services. Uh, we could move that. We could not, you, you guys wanna get the report on the PPEA.
Yes, we do need that.
We could move one B, which would open up probably forty-five minutes if on a four o'clock start. But I don't know if forty-five minutes is enough time.
You don't know if it's enough time?
Man, I, I still think there's a lot of this, I think you guys are gonna wanna ref- reflect on what you see, even if we send you that stuff in advance. I think, which we can do, I think you're gonna wanna reflect on.
Okay, the problem is with the special meeting, guys, is you saw how much trouble we had with the special meeting for superintendent search yesterday. We had to go back and forth and back and forth. So we've got to decide, do we keep it on a school board night? Do we go to the next meeting in October?
I think that's the pro- there's your key. I think the problem is we're trying to fit everything into the twenty-sixth.
So how do you guys feel about going to October, Dr. Robertson and Mr. Jameson?
So the only, listen, we have no problem going past September twenty-sixth. I think the board needs to recognize what that's gonna mean to the eleven of you for the next month. Okay.
Are we talking about a special meeting on the first Tuesday, October third?
No, no, we're talking about our regular school board meeting. Because we can't, uh, we, you, you saw what we went through the other, last, not last night trying to get a schedule for the superintendent search. We're not gonna be able to find a date.
We already, we already asked October third and fourth.
Excuse me, has a, just everybody please use your mics. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just saying, before you do thing for a check, well, I know we were doing some of that for the consultants. We're going to be here during some of that time period, so you need to be careful because you've already committed some of that time.
Yeah, October third and fourth, the consultants are doing staff, community, parent-focused groups. And some, they said they could meet individually with board members if you had time those two days, or they could do it another time.
Okay. Um, is there a projected, once we get this sorted out, implementation date? Like, what's a good date? Like, the start of second quarter, the start of second semester? What are we kind of shooting for in terms of getting this deck of cards in order?
So we were kind of working off the premise that, uh, it could be possible that we could have something approved on September twenty-sixth. And then our recommendation was gonna be, there's a staff day October ninth. That would give us plenty of time, uh, to put things together, brief our administrative team, get our central support staff in line. And, and we already have a staff day on October the ninth. That's a possibility. Uh, if we push it past October tenth, then, uh, we don't have a sta- another staff day until November, and those days are pretty much parent-teacher conferences, et cetera. We would have to do a, a meeting with staff probably after school one day, which we could do. And then you'd be looking for a clean start date. Clean start date could be the beginning of the second quarter.
Should be eighth, Wednesday the eighth.
Wednesday the eighth, yeah.
Unless we did a special meeting, and then this, then David, you would, probably wouldn't be able to be here on Monday the second. I'm looking at that. That's the week before our school board meeting. The o- the other one is the ninth, and we did not put anything down on that because we were talking about it being Columbus Day, but that doesn't, I, I don't know if it affects any of us here.
We have a staff day on the night, correct?
Yeah.
So then again, that's what he, where, where he wanted it before then. That's the problem. We've got people that work, so. Ms. Um, uh, Martin.
So I, I know we have the, the leadership survey with the consultant opening and then closing on the sixth. My concern would be that that survey will be filled up with all of these comments. In a way, it's gonna be kind of, I don't know, muddied by that. I don't know if we'll get this sorted out before the twenty-sixth. But it would be nice to get this sorted out before that survey opens, so it doesn't get muddied with parents thinking that's a forum to discuss this. Um, but I, I will be as flexible as possible with a reminder that I am selected for jury duty every Tuesday. I'll try and get out of it in October. So.
What about the twenty-fifth? That Monday before our next, the school board meeting?
As long as we can change discipline.
On the nineteenth. I won't be here. That's right. Yeah, the twenty-fifth. It'd have to be the twenty-fifth, guys. Is that good for you, David? Okay, because it's the week of the school board meeting.
If we do after three, that would help me.
Raise your hand if the, or give me a thumbs up if the twenty-fifth will work for you guys.
Twenty-one October, right?
No, I'm talking twenty-first of September, honey. Yeah. Yeah, day before our next school board meeting.
Oh, yeah, I'm good.
Okay. What? Yanku, okay. So I would say. Is three o'clock good? Or four? Is four better for everybody? Perfect. Is that gonna give us time? All right, and, and special meeting at four, for policy review, the twenty-fifth at four. Okay, and we'll be here a couple of hours, don't you think?
Yes.
Bobby and, um.
And this will be a single-purpose meeting.
Yeah, this is it. This is all it's gonna be about. Okay? So we'll be here a couple of hours. Depending on how much I wanna throw around. We're gonna trust you got, you two. I'm hoping everybody is, is looking at our administrators here that have the experience that they have and have been working with this and can accept what, what their expertise is in this. And we don't go back and forth with every little thing they give us, guys, okay? Are we okay with that? Can we do that? Unless it's go- I mean, they've already been given the main thing, okay? So what they're doing is how to work with these little nuances. So let's, let's try to, if you have something before that time to send us, please do. And please, everybody, read it and prepare. I know most people do. I'll be reading it, I don't know when, but I, I, but anyway, I'm not sharing what I'm gonna be doing the next week, anyway. So, um, Ms. Brown.
So I just wanna confirm, we will get the regulations in advance to prepare. Okay. Um, and, you know, there, there is a couple of things, and I am going to say this, there's a couple of things in this packet here, um, I'm not a hundred percent comfortable with, so I don't know if you would prefer me to email it, my thoughts. Just, I, I don't wanna blindside you on the twenty-fifth of September. Um, so.
So that's a really good, that's a really good question. Uh, because I've, coming into the night, I felt like we'd have most of our conversations uh, in section H and section D. Because I think there is some, uh, uh, differences of opinion on what we've done in D and H based upon our thinking of the implementation of the new model policies. So for us to be able to come to you on the twenty-fifth uh, with regulations developed, and, and there's gonna be some protocols you're gonna wanna see. We've already talked about kind of the flow chart. If at the same time, on top of all the other duties we have running the school division, are going to have to be, uh, answering, um, individual board members questions about language they have a, a issue with, I think that is going to absolutely, it's needed, but I, I don't. I mean, we literally would have to like take ongoing projects and put them on hold uh, if we were going to be answering eleven individuals on each of these issues. I think that, I, I, I would, I appreciate what Chair, Chairwoman Riggs mentioned. Um, if we could at least get this group to understand, we are going to give it our absolute best based upon our, uh, knowledge of what, what really works when you're in a school, and what the real situation is, and working with Ms. Lynetti, recognizing we get in here on the twenty-fifth, there're probably gonna be some items we can discuss, but then the board can discuss those items together. And then instead of answering board member A or board member C, board member A and C are having this discussion with you guys, which is the real beauty of having you all together on those remaining issues that we are going to have, and it's okay. But I would prefer if we can have the time unencumbered to do the very best we can to get something to you before Monday the twenty-fifth that you can react to.
So you want us, what you're saying is you want, you're gonna get it to us, and if you have a reaction to what you've sent us, to please let you know before the twenty-fifth, right?
No, no.
Or you wanna wait till the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna do, we're gonna get you as much information as we can get you before the twenty-fifth for you to read and review and make all your notes. And then when we come in here on the twenty-fifth, that's where, hopefully at that point, we're down to two or three areas that we have like, look, really heartburn over that we can discuss.
Is everybody good with that? Put a thumbs up if you are.
If I, if we could get a draft, say by Sunday the twenty-fourth, that would be fabulous. So I have the time to read on it.
Yeah, yeah. But read the posi- I don't, the regulations and policies are not gonna change significantly. What you're gonna be seeing are protocols, how they're doing it. What we've given you here is our best thinking on how to comply and protect with the law. Uh, I'm not gonna tell you that the twenty-twenty-three model policies, I don't care what the Attorney General told you. That was a hail mary pass that they threw out there. That is not necessarily the state of the law. That is simply an opinion. So we're doing the best we can to try to protect you. So don't, you need to read these. This is what you, they, they will show you the protocol, how it works in a school. And that is your biggest problem with the twenty-twenty model policies. They were not written by people that work in a school that understand how you have to do them. They have got to figure out how to implement that on this. So you're gonna be seeing more protocols and flow. There might be some changes in regulations, but read these because these are our best thinking on regulations. Obviously, you can tell them what the language is, but if you wanna know what the regulations are gonna say, they're probably gonna look at that. Well, you're gonna be seeing our protocol. But if you wanna know what the regulations are gonna say, they're probably gonna look at that. Well, you're gonna be seeing our protocols and how you would implement those goal. We might end up tweaking some of this based on some of the stuff we're hearing, but it's not gonna be significantly different as far as the regulations and policies go.
Okay, Mr. Callen.
Okay, being the sequential guy that I am. We adjourned the workshop in order to go to the big show and we returned to the workshop. We have not addressed a single issue that we last left by returning to the workshop. So with minutes to go before the carriage turns into a pumpkin. I'm not trying to delay the evening, but are there things that we still need to hammer out on? Cuz my notes tell me we left off at the bottom of page four of nine. And do we need to hammer through those difficult things between now and two o'clock in the morning? In order to get you and your troops what you need in order to get us what we are going to be receiving from you on the weekend of the twenty-third, twenty-fourth.
So cl- so clearly, uh if there were issues that were really uh stick sticking points for some. It would be helpful for us if we could have that discussion sooner rather than later. Otherwise, when we come on the twenty fifth, we're gonna come with realization, there's a couple of areas that are probably gonna garner a lot of the conversation.
So you've already said D and H?
D and D and G is where I thought we were gonna have most of the conversation.
Oh, D and G, okay.
But you can't skip five and six cuz you gotta go sequential. We're at the bottom of four according to my notes. I'll turn my.
So yeah, so D's D's on four. So where is it that is it fi- number five? D five?
So what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is revisit what's remaining. And provide you or others with the sticking issues that we think need to be hammered out. And not try to hammer it out tonight. Is that what I'm sensing?
Yeah, so the only challenge and and we all know this, anytime you start may having these kind of really meaty conversations after the clock starts starts midnight. People are tired and uh it's they're just tired. Your best thinking is not done after midnight.
And here's, please don't group email each other about making decisions on there. I I need you not to. Copy all and go back and forth about policy stuff cuz I don't want this turning into a a complaint about a FOIA violation or a meeting. So if you really have language you wanna send to us, then send it to me, send it to Dr. Robertson. We'll try to collate it, but I don't wanna see a back and forth dialogue between a couple of you on particularly an issue they know that people are gonna FOIA and ask about.
Yeah, send send it to the the two of them. Ms. Brown.
Okay, so conflicting information here. Email, don't email. Um if you don't want the emails, that's fine. Um again, I have a couple uh sections of specific concern. I I can't really, you know, since we jumped around so much, I can't tell you exactly which ones they are. Um especially in light of everything, but you know, I don't know if you want me to communicate that. If you don't, I can wait until the meeting. Um I'm fine with either one.
So I I have I have an idea. I think this will work. We feel like we have a pretty good idea what sticking points would be. You guys might be able to help us right now if you can simp- simply allow me to do this activity. Take you through the document and and just simply say, does anyone have an issue with this? And I don't even know what your issue is. I just need to know where are the where are the issues, where are the items where there's no issue? And then where are the items where there are issues because I it is clear that some members of the board are crystal clear. If you're a girl or a boy, you will never step on the athletic field with a member of the opposite sex. We know that. So we're gonna put forth our recommendation, recognizing whatever our recommendation is, there's gonna be an alternate side. So we'll be prepared for an alternate side conversation, but what you wanna see from us is our recommendation and best thinking. But we know right there, there's gonna be two sides of that one without a doubt. We know there's gonna be two sides too. Who can use what locker rooms and what restroom. We know that, so that's easier for us to understand. So if that's okay, you know, we could go through this, you know, and just say, does anyone have each? I think we kinda hashed out the definitions, although Mr. Culpepper brought forth some language that you might wanna consider about eligible students. But then Ms. Lynetti noted that we probably ought to make sure we're aware of, based on Ms. Owens' question, we are. We can't change it here and then that have an adverse effect somewhere else. So could we go to section three, model policies and and just kinda go through section three, model policies? Does anyone have?
What page?
It's page two, two, well, it's one and two. It's the model policy language, the bottom of page three. It's section three, model policies. On, we can go to page, the bottom of page.
You're talking about D?
We're looking at uh pa- bottom of pa- or page two, A. Okay, so if you look at A, there's A one, A two, A three, A four. The model policies on the left, green on the right means it's in our policies now, yellow means suggested language. Does in and so in looking at that, if we just give you a moment to do there, does anyone have any challenges in it? So again, take a moment to look at it. Page two of nine, section A, there's item one, two, three, four.
So does a minor student mean any student under eighteen?
So just to clarify, Mr. Jameson, um when you say except except with regard to eligible students. Parents must be informed to give an opportunity to object before counseling services pertaining to gender. I thought we did not counsel. Regarding gender.
So the specific question was, I mean, I I heard what you just shared. The question is.
It's beside three.
Right.
Correct, but the reason we're putting that in there is to be what the policy say, the model policy says you have to have that phrase in there. We don't because we don't. Give counseling on gender. It's not in our policy cuz we don't do that. But to make sure you comply with the policy, I put it over there. It's not a practice, it's not in our policy cuz we don't do that. But to make sure nobody's questioning, would you be doing that? We went ahead and put model language policy in there.
That is correct. This is from a transparency standpoint. Adding this piece. That way, no one would then assume, well, you didn't add that, therefore, you're trying to keep this from us. No. I'm sharing it again. We do not provide counseling on gender. Given that it's in the model policies, we wanna be very transparent. That should it somehow ever come up, we would be contacting home first.
Can we go to B? So B is, it starts on bottom of page two and then goes to page three and it's got one, two, three, four, five. So there's five items in B. And they're all, we believe, captured in our existing policies or regulations.
Would the continual and intentional misgendering be considered bullying? Because there's some other language later.
I have one.
It's kinda not.
Yes, that's probably under your sexual harassment, under five forty-four, but again, those are very fact specific.
Okay, okay.
We have a formal process for that as well. Okay, so C starts on page three. It's C one, two. Let's just C one and two.
I got an issue with one.
Okay, all right, someone make a note of that.
She's a verbiage issue though. It's actually, this is actually what Ms. Martin brought up.
Okay, C one and two, anything? All right, and then we're on page four. And that is D, identification two. It's one, two, three, four, five, and it continues on to page five. So this is a little longer. Yes, ma'am.
I I was just prepared to say that it was gonna be issues. I thought you didn't need to know which issues, but the. I would have some questions about, again, the nickname, how that's being determined. If I wanna be Danny, is that a boy name? Do I have to explain that my middle name is Danielle and now all of a sudden Danny is now okay, when maybe it wasn't before? How are we making those decisions? Or are we just gonna tell Daniel, no, you can't be called Dan either until your parent puts that in.
So we'll put further clarification in our guidelines around nicknames.
I believe I was told that when a student registers the paperwork, cuz we actually looked at a form. And we have the pronouns he, she, and they. And the parent just, I think they just circle it or whatever when they register the student.
They have the option, correct. That's correct. And we during that, just for transparency, during that PRC meeting, it's STU two oh two. It's the student information, essentially detailed report, has a nickname field and does have pronouns.
So it could be a sticking point for some board members who don't want the word, they don't want the pronoun they used, but. It's a, it is in our, already there. And if a parent says, if they circle it, then to me, they're already given permission to use it.
Is there anything in particular with the official record we need to reference in terms of students who come in undocumented? Without official documents?
I mean, we have not been advised to do so from the various, what's the word I'm looking for? Maintenance of records and state laws record related to those. We have protocols in place for what will be acceptable documents. And under what is then listed as an official student record, we have to maintain it. Records retention. That's what I was going for, sorry.
I'm thinking G four will probably be some discussion.
Yeah, we should still be on D. We're still on D. But that doesn't, you're on D, so it's one through seven.
All right, um I believe um that number six may have some contention.
I've got that noted from another member.
Just to share, there are related uh policies and regulations in section four. Of our VBCPS policies and regs that would pertain to six, so we can share those with you.
Ms. Owens, do you mind weighing in on number seven? No, on page five.
Is that, is that, it's, is that a requirement, right? Is that?
Yeah, that's a requirement. Child protective services have the right, it's it's in code section. To to speak to students without parent knowledge um in a private setting.
So that's not a negotiable item.
I think the question, Mr. Callen, is that you don't, you don't see that seven is captured on the right-hand side.
No policy guidance or written material issued. So if we don't have it, you won't cite to it. Unless you wanna say you can't have a policy, but this is saying you have no policy, but that's super. Correct, the second half, which is provide the school division comply with all the prohibited disclosure information and then the twenty-two point one, two seventy-two point one. It has to do with the child abuse issues on there. The first part of the policy is you, we don't have. There's no policy guidance or training on written materials issued uh to encourage them. So that I can't cite to a policy, we don't have a policy that cites. Now, you could add a policy saying we will have no policy that has it. We don't have a policy that encourages them in any way to conceal the information. It's written in the negative is the way it is, so.
Whether it's athletic events or restrooms or locker rooms, that's a given, that that'll be an area that is going to be dealt, drilled into.
Yeah, I'm quite certain that those are clear, and that's why I was saying, yeah. Yeah, so E, anything in E? E one, two, three, it's page six. E, one, two, three.
Dr. Roberts, I have a, Roberts, I have a question, um, it's stolen the end of D.
Okay.
Um.
D, right?
Mm-hmm, is, this is the, it's part of D seven, is there a reason, uh, that the principals are making the report to social services rather than the person with the actual knowledge?
When I've talked with people about this concern, I think you can't do it that way, the concern is what you, you want them to report to the principal because you don't want the teacher to decide, I don't think this is child abuse, I'm not going to report it. We wanted to make sure they talk to the principal guy, because almost always the call comes in from the principal, uh, or the counselor, the, I've had this conversation, other concerns, when we've looked at this once before, the concern is, we don't necessarily want a staff member making the judgment call and not making the call when they probably shouldn't have made the call, that they're in their mind, that I didn't think it was bad enough, I've tried to protect somebody, I've tried to protect the, the father, and I didn't want to call it, so I think the guidance is generally to talk to administrator.
Okay, and, you know, I, I was just kind of curious about it, I, I would assume if they were trying to make the judgment call or protect them, they weren't going to tell the principal anyway, and if they get to the point that they're telling the principal, it would probably be helpful just from a, from the CPS standpoint to have that person there when the call is being made, because they're going to have questions and that principal is not going to necessarily know all the answers because they weren't there.
So, if I may, two parts, there was multiple parts there, one, this is to ensure that the building principal is aware of something that occurred in their building.
Absolutely.
Two, this is also to help ensure that should this situation, well, when it's being reported, so that firsthand knowledge is provided to child protective services, that phone call internally, we say occurs with the person who heard the information.
Okay, that's what I was looking for.
Three, the administrator should, now that they've been in the, the room at the time that the call was made and they're acknowledged by CPS as part of the referral or part of the reporting, can then remain on site, given that we try to alleviate some of that pressure on teachers, so those are the three main sections of that as to why the principal gets involved.
I love that it's made together, that's what I wanted to make sure, that it wasn't the principal, I mean, if the employee has to go home, then obviously the principal can do it, but if they can make it together, that's certainly ideal.
So anything on E? Anything on E? F?
I did have on E two, um, the not disclosing, uh, a student's gender to other students and, um, other parents, I, I feel like it's implied unless with permission, I mean, you're disclosing it if you are using their preferred pronouns, um, and so I, maybe it's just implied that you can do it when that student wants you to talk about them with their correct identified pronouns, but not if they haven't given you permission, how, how is, how are you talking to other teachers or students about that student?
Well, without, writ, uh, the way this reads, without permission from the, from the s- student or the parent, you're, that information should not be disclosed to anyone else.
And shall not disclose it to other students and other parents, and that is implied without permission.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And to Mr. Callen's point, we recognize GNH is going to have some discussion, so I think that gives us enough to, with, if, if you guys are in agreement, I think that gives us enough to, um, yeah, to help us streamline some things, which then means back to Ms. Brown's question, we don't really need you guys to email us, but I will tell you, maybe, maybe Ms. Weems, I know Ms. Riggs is going to be out of town, maybe if a board member felt particularly strong about something they didn't get set, maybe they can email to you, you can be the collector of it, and then you can send it to, to me, uh, and I'll, I'm going to bring Jean on to the team as well, he's already on the team, but I'm going to bring him in on a bigger role, because I, I, Mr. Jameson's played his overflow one already, but we're going to do what we got to do, I just, I want to keep him out of the direct line of communication, and you work through Dr. Salter or myself, and we'll make sure we've scheduled the right meetings, because, like I said, he's kind of the spokesperson right now, but he's, he's like the Walmart greeter, he's got a whole bunch of people behind him helping him out, he's just a phenomenal communicator, so.
Put on the mic, thank you, sir.
Please read the VHSL, there's another document in VHSL, because what I don't want is people coming here and reading things that they saw somewhere else in the country and projecting that on there, read what we pulled out for you, it may answer a lot of your questions, I feel like sometimes people are just telling stories and projecting stuff out, and that's not really the issue we're dealing with, you know, look at what the actual VHSL regulations are and see if that answers a lot of your questions.
And I would add to that point, Mr. Delaney shared that, uh, there is a planned meeting between the Virginia High School League and the Virginia Department of Education to talk about some of this stuff, and I'll share that in our recent history, we've had one occasion where a, uh, girl at a particular high school petitioned to play on a boys' team even though there was a girls' team. That was it, I mean, that's all we've ever had, so I think we need to be mindful of that as we're trying to figure out where our line in the sand is, it's kind of a non-issue, um, so it's probably not a hill we want down.
It's a wrap?
Yep.
Okay, it's a wrap for the, that, now we have to read in for closed session. I move that the school board recesses in a closed session in accordance with the Expectations to Open Meetings law set forth in Code of Virginia two dot two dash three seven eleven, part A, paragraphs two, seven, and eight, as amended, to deliberate on the following matters: Two, discussion or consideration of admission or disciplinary matters or any other matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning any student of any public institution of higher education in the Commonwealth or any state school system. However, any such student, legal counsel, and if the student is a minor, the student's parents or legal guardians shall be permitted to be present during the taking of testimony or presentation of evidence at a closed meeting, if such student, parents, or guardians so request in writing, and such request is submitted to the presiding officer of the appropriate board. Seven, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or lit- lit- litigating posture of the public body. For the purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because of an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Eight, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter, namely to discuss, A, status of pending litigation or administrative cases, B, recommendation of hearing officer for student discrimination complaint, C, student discipline appeal, appeal hearing, deliberations as needed, and D, consultation with legal counsel regarding probable litigation and pending litigation matters.
Second?
Have a second? Okay, all in favor of going in closed, please raise your hand.
Madam Chair, we have nine eyes, the motion did pass.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lanetti, are you going to? Remember, don't tr- don't. Virginia Beach has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section two dot two dash three seven one two D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the school board of the City of Virginia Beach hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meetings requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
So move.
Do I have a second? Kathleen, Kathleen, second.
Madam Chair, we have ten eyes, the motion to certify closed passed.
Okay, so now we have to vote on, um, the student discrimination appeal, okay? I'm going to read it. Whereas the parent of a Tallwood High School student filed a racial discrimination complaint in accordance with the school board policy five dash seven regarding comments made by a staff member to her student in February and March twenty twenty-three, and whereas the school administration conducted a discrimination investigation and determined that there was insufficient evidence of a, of a violation of policy five seven. However, the staff member's actions did not support an inclusive environment, and the staff member's actions violated other policies and regulations, and whereas the parent of the Tallwood High School student appealed that determination, and the school board assigned the discrimination appeal to a hearing officer to conduct a hearing and provide written findings of fact and a recommendation to the school board, and whereas the hearing officer rendered his findings of fact and recommendation on August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and whereas on September twelfth, twenty twenty-three, the school board reviewed the hearing officer's findings of fact and recommendations. Now therefore it is determined, one, that the school board adopted this third, August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three findings of fact and recommendation of the hearing officer, that there, that there insufficient evidence of, of a violation of policy five dash seven. Two, that the school administration is ordered to notify the student and parents of this decision and to place a copy of this decision, the supporting documentation, and any recording of the hearing in the student's official files, adopted by the school board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, this thirteenth day of September twenty twenty-three. Do I have?
Second.
Oh, second. I need a motion for this. Yeah, I made the motion, I made the motion for this resolution, I have a second from Ms., um, Brown, okay? All in favor, please raise your hand.
Madam Chair, we have ten eyes, the motion did pass.
Thank you. Okay. We are adjourned.